Sixteenth to order, start with the roll call please.
Atkins.
Yeah.
Evans.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Mizell.
Here.
Mutchler.
Here.
Wall.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Garner.
Yeah.
Mayor Carr.
Here. So we do have a quorum tonight. And we'll start off with our invocation given by Reverend Don Anderson, Emergency Services Chaplain. Please stand. Mayor and Council, before we begin, I'd like to just make mention and just kind of keep in your thoughts and your prayers, if you would. A former minister or minister in our community who stood at this podium many times over the last several years and helped me out and served our police and fire as a chaplain and served the community in so many ways, passed away this past weekend. A good friend of mine, Brother Greg Turner, just remember his family, if you would. It's a big loss to our community, but a bigger loss to his family. He loved this town so much, he wasn't from here, but he embraced his community and just always wanted to strive to bring unity and help. So appreciate that, if you would remember his family. So let's pray. Father, tonight, we thank you for your blessings and I want to thank you for this opportunity that we have to come together to take care of the business of the community. Lord, I thank you for our leaders who stand before us as, now, Lord, they have come to give of their time and their talents to be able to make our community better. I just pray that you'd bless them with wisdom, courage, and discernment. And Father, I also pray tonight that you'd just be with Brother Greg's family. Lord, just comfort them and be with them during their time of loss. Thank you for him and for all those others who serve our community in so many ways, just continue to bless them. Lord, bless our police, fire, EMS, watch over and protect him, keep him safe, and all of our city workers as well. And we ask your blessing upon this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I totally forgot to do this at the beginning of the meeting, but I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add a special presentation to Ms. Lena Starnes. Second. Jordan moved, Evan seconded. Roll call please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Here.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
You thought you were gonna get off easy, didn't you? I actually, I have a proclamation for Lena. As you guys know, January first is gonna be her last day with the city. And I want to read this at this time. Whereas the City of Lebanon recognizes the exceptional dedication, leadership, and service of Lena Starnes, who has faithfully served the citizens of Lebanon for nearly twenty-four years, beginning her tenure on May fourteenth, two thousand and one, as an Accounts Payable Clerk and advancing to Assistant City Administrator and City Clerk. And whereas Lena Starnes has been instrumental in shaping the legislative framework of the City of Lebanon, contributing to the drafting and passage of approximately two thousand seven hundred seventy ordinances, ensuring clarity, compliance, and the effective governance of our city. And whereas she has demonstrated a tireless commitment to professional development, earning numerous certifications, including the designation of Certified Municipal Clerk, Missouri Professional City Clerk, Master Municipal Clerk, and Certified Municipal Official. And whereas Lena has served with distinction at the state and regional levels, including her tenure as Director of the Central Division of the Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association, as well as Treasury Secretary, Vice President, and President of the Central Division. And whereas Lena's commitment to public service extends beyond her professional achievements, reflecting her deep care for community and her steadfast efforts to make Lebanon a better place for all. And whereas Lena Starnes will retire on January one, twenty twenty-five, leaving behind a legacy of service, professionalism, and an indelible mark on the City of Lebanon, now therefore I, Jared Carr, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, as Lena Starnes' Day in the City of Lebanon, Missouri, and encourage all citizens to join us at a special celebration from two to four P.M. on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, to honor her remarkable career, offer a heartfelt thanks to her contributions, and wish her health, happiness, and success in her retirement. In witness whereof, I have herein too set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Lebanon to be affixed the sixteenth day of December, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Lena.
Do I have to get out?
You just now see me? There's another special presentation on the bill as well, and this is the Mayor's Award for Excellence, the Silver Leaf Award. It is presented to Lena Starnes with great appreciation for over twenty years of dedication and commitment. We thank you for going above and beyond serving the citizens of Lebanon. Awarded, this, it says ninth day of December, but that's because it was printed for last week. So one little clerical error for the last day, for the last award, please go forward. Where's the party gonna be? It is at the Cowen Civic Center foyer. That's right.
Will there be cake?
And the clerk is definitely the hardest thing to think to keep something secret from, so. But we pulled it off, I think. Thank you very much, Lena. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it's an honor to give those to you, so.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item six there in the City Clerk appointment. And you want, you facilitating that?
Mayor and Counsel, the mayor and I have discussed this at length. Lena has done a fantastic job bringing Lacey along. We would like to respectfully request your support to appoint her as City Clerk. There is an effective date, which is January second, I believe. Which kind of lines up with Lena's departure and the holidays, and she will be your new City Clerk going forward. After tonight's action, we'll move forward with personnel action to recruit to fill Lacey's position, which she'll vacate by moving up. So that's, that's the request.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Atkins moves. Garner seconded. Roll call please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Congratulations, Lacey, and thank you very much.
Sorry. I just wanted to say thank you so much to Mayor and Counsel for this. It's an honor to serve as a City Clerk, and Lena has done a great job teaching me and training me, and I just look forward to continue doing great things in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now the ceiling's gonna come down on us, I think, so. Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. Jordan moved, Garner seconded. Roll call please.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda is approved, and we'll move on to the second reading of Council Bill sixty-seven eighty-seven.
Um, yes, Mayor and Counsel, this is the council bill that was presented back, I believe, the, um, well, whatever the date was for our last meeting that we had, I don't even remember anymore.
November twelfth, I think, or something like that.
As I mentioned, these are changes to our code that was suggested and recommended by ASCA during our normal audit that they have. And it brings the practice and state law in line with our codes now. So everything should jive and the municipal court will be great going forward and being compliant. And Councilman Mitchell, or excuse me, Mizell, the report, I believe, we did see that that report was not being distributed to the council as it should have been. It was being given to finance, but not to the council, so that has been remedied, and you will get that report going forward on a monthly basis.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, amendment in the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter Twelve, Court.
Motion to approve. Wall and Mutchler on the second. Roll call please.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner. Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-seven eighty-seven becomes ordinance seven thousand thirty-one. And Council Bill sixty-seven eighty-eight, as you guys know, we started with our retreat back in October and formalized our, finalized our goals there, had staff presentations. I did not hear any feedback from any of you guys on anything, so I assumed that you guys were okay with the goals as they were presented there and moving forward with that. So that's what this ordinance is, is adopting those for the next year of twenty twenty-five. Any questions on that? First reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, adopting council goals for twenty twenty-five.
Most approved.
Second. Jordan and Mizell, roll call please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, adopting council goals for twenty twenty-five.
Move on the second.
Second, second.
Evans and Atkins on the second. Roll call please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-seven eighty-eight becomes ordinance seven thousand thirty-two. And Council Bill sixty-seven eighty-nine, Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. It's great to be here this evening. For this ordinance, we're requesting approval to renew our contract with Lamar for our digital billboard that sits right outside of Bass Pro Shops in Springfield, Missouri. We partner with Bennett Springs State Park on this board, so most of our messages, of course, are about Bennett Springs in some capacity. Of course, we're always mentioned, or our website is on that, and that is for the basically calendar year twenty twenty-five. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Rebecca, how long have we had that now?
For longer than my time. So that's been, that was in place when I joined, which was about four years ago. So we've had that for quite some time. It's really nice because they pay half.
Yeah, I understand that.
I like that part the best.
Yep.
I'll just share some information that I got for you, you know, as a running law firm, I get lots of invitations to do billboards. I just saw a study that as far as people and their decision to do something or do a product or buy a product or whatever, three percent is influenced by a billboard. So just so you understand, that I think the effectiveness of it is definitely declining. I don't know if that's exactly the same with this in particular, because it probably does give awareness. I think it's best for awareness. And, you know, I've had the billboard downtown here for about twelve years or something. I do think it kind of fades into the background radiation a bit. And so if you're not getting new material on there, it's definitely not gonna be impactful in any way. So definitely, if you're gonna do it, then put some new material on there, just so that it grabs people's attention. If it's the same, it will just fade into the background.
A hundred percent agree. That's why I love digital the best, because we can change those messages at any given time. It's part of the cost. It doesn't cost us anything extra to ask them to even help us do graphics. If you drove by that billboard right now, you would see a picture of Santa Claus holding a trout, perhaps, that says Merry Christmas from Bennett Springs State Park in the City of Lebanon. So that is the best part about digital, and I completely agree, because the message will fade if you just keep it the same. We did just update our vinyl boards on both sides of I forty-four as well, for that reason in particular. I mean, you just have to switch it up. But it is brand awareness. Nobody can tell you that the number of people that see the billboard and come and spend money here, there's no studies that can tell you that. They can just simply tell you the traffic numbers that potentially see that, which are decent, so.
Yeah, it's huge.
They're not my favorite brand of advertising. I will say that they never have been. Because of that, I like to see returns, but I feel that they're necessary, especially for our destination.
I just wanted to share that information that I have for you.
Now, I'm sure if I asked Lamar, they would tell me something different.
They will, they will.
Maybe?
But this was a study by, I think it's by Wolf Advertising Group.
Yeah.
And they did the Springfield Market.
Yeah.
And obviously for lawyers, I mean, we're just, we're just a huge driver in advertising. And the things, the things that are really fading are billboards and TV ads. Those two things have really, really taken a huge hit. And five, they'll tell you, if you listen, five-second digital ad on YouTube has way more impact than lots of the old-fashioned advertising. So anyway, just something to think about, just something I learned, edification for you to pass on.
Yeah, that's fine. Again, I don't disagree at all. I actually thought you might have said print in there as well.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, we haven't done a print ad in ten years. Yeah.
I'd be happy to take any other questions.
Any other questions, comments?
Or any other information.
First reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving a contract renewal with Lamar to showcase Bennett Springs State Park through billboard advertising.
Most approved.
Jordan and Mutchler, roll call please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving a contract renewal with Lamar to showcase Bennett Springs State Park through billboard advertising.
Move on the second.
Mitchell and Evans on the second. Roll call please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-seven eighty-nine becomes ordinance seven thousand thirty-three. And Council Bill sixty-seven ninety.
Thank you very much. What we're seeking here is approval to enter into a contract with Brand USA. They're a marketing agency and partner with the Missouri Division of Tourism. Just recently, the Missouri Division of Tourism, I'm just gonna call it MDT, so it'll be quicker, but MDT released an additional grant program to partner with Brand USA, their international marketing company, to create certain projects that we would target international markets. I know you're thinking, why would we do that? Thought I would tell you. Because we have a large international presence here in Lebanon because of Route sixty-six. I think that it's super important that we take any opportunity to market internationally right now, because we have the Centennial coming up in twenty twenty-six of Route sixty-six, and people are planning those trips. So the opportunity that we have is to create a webpage for Lebanon on the visit, visittheusa.com website that Brand USA manages for us. We're able to target markets, the U.K. is basically where we're gonna go, because we see a lot of those visitors. And we were able to do this. The cost is twelve thousand dollars, which is what the contract is for. Missouri Division of Tourism is offering us ninety percent of that cost in order to create this page, and it's a one-time fee, meaning we don't get hit for twelve thousand dollars every year. It's twelve thousand dollars, our Lebanon page is there, and then if we choose to update it later down the road with any new updated photos or information, then we could do so. Of course, we would have to pay for some of that. But the initial big cost of the twelve grand would be covered ninety percent. So it was a nice program that they offered. I went ahead and just applied and thought, if we can do this, this would be great for us, especially sitting on Route sixty-six as we do. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Might mention the World Cup, too.
And that is a very big factor as well. We have the World Cup coming. Twenty twenty-six is gonna be a crazy year for Missouri. Kansas City's getting the World Cup, which we do believe, and all of the folks looking at those things and watching that at a higher level than we are, are saying, we're in the distance where we would capture some of that business and attention. So that's obviously another reason that we want to be plugged into that marketing. And plus, we have the state Route sixty-six Centennial Commission, as well as the federal Route sixty-six Centennial Commission, all having these discussions and making sure that we're planted right where we should be with regard to those events.
So Rebecca, am I correct? So Brand is gonna pay ninety percent of it?
No, no. Brand USA is just the entity that puts it together and manages the website and platform. However, Missouri Division of Tourism is going to pay for the ninety percent. So they'll pay ten thousand eight hundred, we'll pay twelve hundred dollars in the end.
Brainerd, right?
Yeah, I know.
Who designs the page?
Brand USA.
Do you have any say in it?
I have all the say in it. So we've actually already provided them with all of our materials. They have very specific things they wanted and needed, and we have obviously our photos that we can use, and then we gave them information and wording, but it won't be published until we see the final version and approve it. Definitely. And that's a great question. They don't get to say it. We do.
Any other questions, comments? First reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Brand USA to promote Lebanon to international travelers through a destination webpage.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mitchell and Mizell, roll call please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving an agreement with Brand USA to promote Lebanon to international travelers through a destination webpage.
Move on the second.
Second, second.
Wall and Evans on the second. Roll call please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-seven ninety becomes ordinance seven thousand thirty-four.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Rebecca. Appreciate it. Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-one, Jared?
Good evening. This is a carry-on from our ERP project. We're at the phase of the project where ENCODE will do all the data integrity checks, which is ensuring our one over a million records are suitable in the new ERP system and/or finding every other record that is not fixing, correcting, modifying to get it into the new system, as well as our history of ENCODE as well in a package in the SQL format, big database that we can archive for finance and H.R. and the departments to reference back to when we pull it from the web. Any questions?
Are we nearing the end of the project?
We're getting closer.
Okay. It's just, you know.
Every day.
I one hundred percent support the idea, but it's another eighteen thousand dollar bill. And you just start saying, are the eighteen thousand dollar bills gonna keep on coming, or are they gonna be ending at some point?
They will be ending at some point.
Okay. And you know when that is?
No, I do not.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, I think our job is to be good custodians of the people's money, and at some point, we have to say, how much migration are we gonna do? You know, when is it gonna end?
We are not willing to let any bit of our history go.
Okay.
And so when we did our migration the first two times, as far as with Cassell, who is the owner of the new ERP, we've had some very good results as far as all of our data and being able to pull it from different, from utilities, from A.R., from A.P. and so forth. The data integrity portion is what we're concerned with, because we did miss twenty-eight thousand records as well. And this is a full, you know, the full database from ENCODE versus what we're pulling as well as Q ninety. So a little bit different, which puts us pretty close to the training phase, which is them coming here to do the live, pre-live training, and some of us going there for pre-live training. This puts us one step closer to that. They have a March timeline. I'm not sold on the March timeline personally, but I think we're pretty close to that, depending on the scope and how long it takes myself and ENCODE to finish this portion.
Is there any reason to keep data from forever ago? I mean.
Yes.
At some point, okay. So there's a reason to do all of it.
So you gotta think of, if H.R. needs to pull records from retirement and so forth. So we have our, I still have a virtual server of the original database that was used before I started and Kathy, that we created a virtual server for in case that needs to be accessed.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of the City of Lebanon, Missouri, approving data migration services from Tyler Technologies for the new ERP system software.
Motion to approve. Wall and Mutchler, roll call please.
Mitchell. Mizell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving data migration services from Tyler Technologies for the new ERP system software.
Move on the second.
Second, second.
Mizell and Mutchler on the second. Roll call please.
Mizell.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall. Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-one becomes ordinance seven thousand thirty-five. Thank you, Jared. Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-two, Sean?
Good evening. This bill is for Adaptive Planning, which is the software used by the Finance Department to prepare the annual budget for the city. So the city originally entered into a five-year license agreement with Adaptive, which is due to expire on December, well, it expired on December fifteenth. Became aware of this last month. And I guess the original, to give you context, the original plan with this was to, as part of the overall ERP migration, move away from Adaptive to a different software called ClearGov, which was purchased prior to me coming into the position. And so as part of that migration relies with the timing, the time of year, end of, with the end-of-year activities and the need, the time it takes to migrate from one software program to another. We spoke with ClearGov, Gina Woods, as interim director at that time, to get a credit on that purchase that we made and push it off for one more year. And then with the idea of extending our current budgeting software for an additional year at a cost of twenty-nine thousand four hundred. And then the following year, we'll receive that credit back of twenty-four thousand six sixty-seven for the ClearGov software that we purchased. I know, it's really clear and straightforward. But the idea is to simply extend the status quo on our budgeting software for this year and push that migration out one year. Can I answer any questions on that? So clear as mud.
So were we not prepared, or you're saying we had issues with timing and stuff? Is that correct?
Yeah, I really can't speak to the history of it. I became aware of the situation with the software in November. I, you know, came into the role at the end of October.
Mayor.
Yeah.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we purchased ClearGov probably two years ago, which is going to become our budgeting software that will automatically feed up into Cassell. The Cassell project, kind of as Councilman Mizell mentioned, we've started to get the data out of ENCODE. Now, keep in mind, it's important to get all the data out of ENCODE, or we're gonna pay them for the rest of time to store our data. So we need to end that relationship, get our data out of it, end that relationship. It did not seem like a good decision, and it was mine, and I'll own it, to ask our directors and the team to learn both ClearGov and Cassell at the same time, two different software packages and how they interact and work. So we hit pause on ClearGov, both on implementation as well as the expense, and this extends Adaptive for one year, gets us through Cassell's implementation. And then Adaptive will go away, ClearGov will come on next budget cycle. Does that kind of help lay out all those moving parts? Changing your ERP system is a very large project and difficult. Asking the team to learn two completely different systems, even though they communicate at the same time, I was afraid we'd fall short. As good as they are, I'm not. As good as they are, I'm afraid we'd fall short. I know I would.
And my questions had no disrespect for anybody. It just, when I saw the big tab for doing the Casell project and all these other stuff, I was like, yes, that's obviously something we need to do. I just didn't know it would be a continuous feed of more money and time and effort. I thought it would be over, but it, it's just bigger than I could imagine, so.
It's enormous.
Yeah.
So.
So I understand.
We tried everything to extract all of the data from ENCODE, come to find out a big chunk of it's in Cobalt. Um, we've had that product a long time. We're on a, a, a legacy, like, we're on nine point O, which, you know, I think you and I were probably in high school. Um, so.
Basically just paying for all the, the, the fact that we didn't update it before?
Which is astronomically expensive, yes. And to remind council, we actually saved a tremendous amount of money by moving away from ENCODE to Casell, and we are still below budget, which I believe was around four hundred fifty thousand, half a million.
Yes, sir. Right at five hundred, we're well.
We're well below the original budget price. Um, the thought of paying ENCODE additional money, there is no one in this room, maybe Jared, who hates to see that happen.
Sure.
But we have to. So that, just kinda, all that ties together.
Together. I, just going forward, let's be proactive. Let's never go through this again. So, you know, come, come before us and say, hey, we need to update the software. It's gonna be an incredibly small cost. I think everybody on the council would say, yes, let's do that. Let's not wait, you know? Because it sounds like it just waited too long.
It's, it was a less than desirable product, Councilman, and when you called the help line, you better have a couple hours cleared.
Yeah.
To wait. Um, so we, we didn't wanna spend any more money on it because we didn't feel it was meeting our needs respectfully.
Yeah, sure.
Um, that was a very intentional decision.
I've been through it. I mean, it's, you know, it's one of those things, spend a little bit as you go along or spend a lot and, uh, at, at once. And I would definitely recommend, let's, let's spend a little bit as we go along.
So correct my thinking on this ordinance here, that this is more or less just not spending, spending the same amount of money, but not doing ClearGov till next year.
More or less.
Yeah. So it's not spending any more or less, right? Per se, this year. Okay. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, first reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Adaptive to provide budgeting software.
Motion approved.
Second. Jordan and Mizel, roll call please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Adaptive to provide budgeting software.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Evans and Mutchler on the second, roll call please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-two becomes ordinance seven thousand thirty-six. Thank you, Sean. Uh, Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-three, Mike?
Mayor and council, this is renewing the lease for Representative Mark Alfred. As you guys recall, he's in the Civic Center. That relationship has worked well. He pays, um, federal government pays five hundred dollars a month to your term, lined up with flexing taxes. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hearing no questions, first reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a lease agreement with US House Representative Mark Alfred for the use of office space located in the Cowan Civic Center.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mitchell and Evans, roll call please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a lease agreement with US House Representative Mark Alfred for the use of office space located in the Cowan Civic Center.
Move on second.
Second, second.
Jordan and Garner on the second, roll call please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-three becomes ordinance seven thousand thirty-seven. Thanks, Mike. Uh, Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-four, chief.
Mayor and council, uh, before you tonight is a ordinance requesting, uh, just over nineteen thousand dollars to, uh, replace all of our rescue airbags and associated equipment that goes with it. Uh, the bags that we have have, uh, reached or exceeded their fifteen-year shelf life. This money was originally budgeted to purchase, uh, some other technical rescue equipment, uh, but I became aware that Paratek had a trade-in program for our old equipment. Uh, and to take advantage of that, I decided to go ahead and, uh, purchase this equipment instead of waiting, uh, instead of the original equipment. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council? First reading, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so is this like you blow up, uh, airbags so you can jump off a building and not?
No, this is a, this is an airbag so we can lift a bus off of you. God forbid we ever have to do that, but.
That's not much fun.
That's not as much fun.
No, believe me, it's not.
Okay, first reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of rescue airbags from Ed M. Feld Equipment Company for the fire department.
Motion approved.
Second.
Jordan and Garner, roll call please.
Are these reusable? I'm sorry, are these reusable or is there a one-time use?
Oh, no, they're reusable. Yeah, as long as we don't puncture them.
I'm just wondering.
Atkins. Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of rescue airbags from Ed M. Feld Equipment Company for the fire department.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Evans and Mitchell on the second, roll call please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-four becomes ordinance seven thousand thirty-eight. Thank you very much. Thank you, chief.
Do they come with a patch kit? Are you two texting?
They get out their needle and thread and thread them back together.
Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-five, Sean?
This is for the replacement of two rooftop units, one being located at Fire Station Three, one being located here at City Hall. Uh, we received, uh, two bids for this, uh, Walls HVAC out of Crocker, Missouri. They had the best pricing at a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, the rooftop unit here on City Hall is nineteen ninety-seven model. It's a seventy-five ton unit. It's about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, and then the one at, uh, Fire Station Three, it has a faulty evaporator coil in it. Um, it's cheaper to change it than it, well, makes more sense to change it than to repair the coil. It was, uh, about a third of the price difference, uh, in repairing it and just changing it. So, um, our recommendation would be, um, entering a contract with Walls for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to replace those two units. Be happy to answer any questions.
The fire station's not very old.
No, ma'am. Uh, that was put in, uh, about COVID time and, uh, the coil, they couldn't get the parts and the warranty ran out before they were able to get the parts. And then they would not come through. Since it was, since the warranty was out, they wouldn't honor it after COVID. So it's only a four-year-old unit, but, um, it was roughly ten thousand dollars to have that coil replaced. And a new unit's about, I think it was sixteen thousand. Um, you know, it's, it's going on five years old, so it seemed to make more sense to replace it than fix it.
It failed just after the one-year warranty.
They always do. Always does, yeah. Three hundred and sixty-seven today.
What kind of warranty is this new?
Five-year parts and labor.
Yes, sir.
Including the one for the rooftop here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will it get rid of all that noise that happens in here?
I don't know.
Okay.
It might make it worse now.
Honestly, think that is the, uh, you know, the duckwork, uh, patridge the ceiling, and I think it's the, actually the tiles that are down here. Whenever the air kicks on, it sucks those tiles.
I see.
So I think that's what we're hearing. There's a chance.
Maybe, uh.
Blow all the tiles out.
Yeah, maybe a graduated way to turn on the fan or something. I don't know. It's just interesting because, you know, I'm not a jumpy guy normally, but it does sound like the ceiling is gonna fall in on us sometime.
We'll, we'll look into that.
All right.
All right, first reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Walls AVHC Service LLC for the replacement of HVAC units at the City Hall and Fire Station Number Three.
Motion to approve.
Second. Wall and Mizel, missed out on both of them, sorry. Roll call please.
Did you say Mizel?
Yes.
Okay.
That's who I heard first, sorry.
Okay. No, that's fine. I thought you changed your mind.
Yeah, Wall and Mizel, yeah.
Okay. Um, Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Walls A, HVAC Service LLC for the replacement of HVAC units at the City Hall and Fire Station Number Three.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Mitchell and Mizel on the second, roll call please.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-five comes ordinance seven thousand thirty-nine. Council Bill seventy, sixty-seven ninety-six.
Mayor and council, this would be, um, if you remember, we entered an agreement with BMS that, uh, we would remodel that building and in turn they paid us rent. This would be for the exterior cleaning and painting of that building. Um, we received seven bids for this job. Uh, four-one-seven Soft Wash out of Marshfield had the most competitive pricing on it for sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Staff recommends we enter into a contract with four-one-seven Soft Wash, Soft Wash to paint, to clean and paint that building.
Any questions, council? Okay, first reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with four-one-seven Soft Wash to paint the exterior of the city-owned building located at one hundred Harrison Avenue.
Motion approved.
Second. Jordan and Mitchell, roll call please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes. Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with four-one-seven Soft Wash to paint the exterior of the city-owned building located at one hundred Harrison Avenue.
Move on second.
Second, second.
Mitchell and Mizel on the second, roll call please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-six becomes ordinance seven thousand forty. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate it. Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-seven, Mike?
Mayor and council, this is, uh, asking council for approval of the annual aggregate material bid for use in construction and maintenance activities. Most common, uh, used, uh, aggregate went up a dollar a ton or about thirteen percent from last year. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council? First reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri authorizing the purchase of aggregate material from Willard Quarries Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mitchell and Wall, roll call please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri authorizing the purchase of aggregate material from Willard Quarries Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year.
Move on second.
Second, second.
Jordan and Mitchell on the second, roll call please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-seven comes ordinance seven thousand forty-one. Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-eight.
Mayor, this is for the, uh, annual ready-mix concrete bid. Uh, average price of five and a half bag mix went from a hundred and thirty-one dollars a cubic yard to a hundred and forty-four. A thirteen-dollar cubic yard or ten percent increase from last year. Happy to answer any questions.
Did it, it didn't, it didn't go up last year, did it? Or like, very small, was it?
I don't recall, but I think concrete steadily went up.
I know, I think it went up, but not very much last year. If I'm, I don't remember, if I remember right. Was it, we were surprised.
I wish I could buy concrete for that.
I know, yeah, that's still cheap, but.
You got six, so you got six bag mix on, on price.
Six bag is a hundred and fifty dollars a cubic yard.
I think we're paying one eighty. So that's a pretty good price.
You need to buy more, like the city.
We just need to bid it out.
All right, first reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council, the City of, excuse me, City Council of Lebanon, Missouri authorizing the purchase of ready-mix concrete from Lebanon Ready Mix for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year.
Motion to approve.
Second. Garner and Mitchell, roll call please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri authorizing the purchase of Lebanon, excuse me, ready-mix concrete from Lebanon Ready Mix for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year.
Move on second.
Second, second.
Mitchell and Wall on the second, roll call please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizel.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-eight becomes ordinance seven thousand forty-two. And Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-nine.
Well, I'm pleased to announce that we do have one material that's going down next year. It's an annual asphalt concrete, uh, contract with Willard Asphalt and, uh, bid prices, base price went down five dollars a ton or six percent from last year's price from ninety to eighty-five dollars per ton installed. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any questions? Okay, first reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Willard Asphalt Paving for the purchase and installation of asphalt for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year.
Motion to approve.
Mitchell and Muchler? Uh, roll call please.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizel?
Yes.
Muchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes. Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Willard Asphalt Paving for the purchase and installation of asphalt for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year.
Move on to second.
I can say.
Jordan and Muchler on the second, roll call please.
Mizel?
Yes.
Muchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-seven ninety-nine becomes ordinance seven thousand forty-three. And Council Bill sixty-eight hundred, Mike?
Mayor and council, this is the materials for the Fourth and Jefferson intersection improvements project. We're planning on, uh, increasing the radius size there from approximately an eighteen-foot radius to a forty-foot radius there on the corner where Infused Bank is. And, uh, we're, that's gonna entail us moving the traffic signal and, uh, doing some asphalt, concrete work, some moving, uh, fire hydrant and replacing the sidewalk and ramps. This is a true partnership with MoDOT, MoDOT is paying for the boring installation of new conduit for the traffic signal operation there. They're supplying the pole and mast arm for the traffic signal. City will be doing the, uh, work for the concrete base for the signal and the concrete work on the roadway will be wiring up the signal and, and, uh, we've got estimated for the concrete portion of this project at twenty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. The asphalt portion at nine thousand dollars and then the aggregate at thirty-eight hundred and seventy dollars. Those, those materials will be at thirty-six thousand two hundred and twenty. We have also other materials that'll be purchased and it'll be new signal heads for that signal. We're buying new pedestrian controllers and pedestrian signals to replace those standards that stand out there that are always ran over next to the road. We'll have push-button extensions and remove all those. And then we'll have, uh, some striping and, and, uh, thermal plastic materials. Cost of a contractor boring a hole to pour the concrete for the signal in there. And, uh, total cost of that would not exceed sixty thousand, so the project for these materials and the contracting for, uh, boring this hole is ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars. Happy to answer any questions.
Mike, I cannot, I cannot vote to approve this unless you can somehow roll in the improvements to Adams and Fourth Street. Because it's a dangerous intersection, it has to be fixed, there's going to be someone who gets killed there.
It's already completed, sir.
Is it done?
It's completed.
When did it get done?
Been completed for about a month.
Okay. So what, what was changed?
We moved the, the, uh, Fourth Street and Adams, the Adams side, moved those in. We turned the, uh, parking there, about the first two parking holes at the apartments were eliminated. And then the next five were made into angle parking. The engineer that designed that said it met all the standards for side triangles there. We actually went from a thirty-two foot wide to just a twenty-eight foot wide, brought those in closer.
Okay.
There, yes, that.
Excellent.
Those improvements have been done for about a month.
Okay, I just haven't done, gone down there.
That's how fast they are.
That's hey.
We're also moving the place and curb in between Madison and Jefferson, eliminating the on-street parking on Fourth Street in between there and on the north side of Adams between Jefferson and Adams, eliminating that parallel parking on that side, moving the curb in.
I guess I just didn't notice it, but there's massive puddling there, there was massive puddling there today as I went through it. So, just understand, I mean, it was huge at the intersection of Adams and, uh, Fourth Street. So I didn't think there was gonna, there was any improvements, but I mean, there was almost like a lake there, so, check it out. Next time, Marines. So I, I didn't think you had touched it because of the, of the lake that I drove through, so, well, thank you.
When did you drive through that?
Um, today, and on my way to Camden, so I had an appointment there at ten, so it was like nine forty-five.
This morning?
Yeah.
Cause we were out there.
Okay.
Just charging some water, but it wasn't that time.
Okay. Anyway, just checking out, but thank you, I applaud your efforts, it's just, I just didn't want anyone else to get hurt there.
So you made it from Camden, or from here to Camden fifty? My clients are, uh, extra patient with me.
He knows a guy can get him off of that, right?
Have you seen my new car?
Have, have you met my nephew?
I probably have, unfortunately.
The high problem.
Sorry, Mike, we, we digress there, so, first reading please, first reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of various materials authorizing the execution of all necessary documents to complete the Fourth Street and Jefferson Avenue intersection improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mitchell and Mizel? Roll call please.
Muchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Evans? Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizel?
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of various materials and authorizing the execution of all necessary documents to complete the Fourth Street and Jefferson Avenue intersection improvements.
Move on to second.
Second, second. Wall and Atkins on the second, roll call please.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizel?
Yes.
Muchler?
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-eight hundred becomes ordinance seven thousand forty-four. Thank you, Mike. Council Bill sixty-eight oh one, Richard?
Mayor and council, this is a, uh, agreement with, uh, Legan and also, uh, uh, Ferguson Excavating for On Call Services for site and excavation work. We call these folks whenever we have, uh, uh, extra work that we can't take care of or what have you. And, uh, it'll be for a one-year period, their rates have gone up just slightly since our last contract. They're, they were just ending a three-year contract, so this will be a one-year contract and then with, uh, additional two-year, uh, year at a time options. Any questions?
Often it's not happened where you have to use.
Uh, we'll, we'll use, uh, we use excavating more so than anything, or, or some clearing sometimes, so, not, not too often. It's nice to have though when we need it.
Yeah.
John, John uses them some for the Parks Department on some stuff, so.
Any other questions, comments? First reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Ferguson Excavating LLC and Legan Trucking and Excavating for excavation and site work for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year.
Motion to approve? Mizel and Muchler? Roll call please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizel?
Yes.
Muchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Ferguson Excavating LLC and Legan Trucking and Excavating for excavation and site work for the twenty-twenty-five calendar year.
Move on to second.
Second, the second. Mitchell and Mizel on the second, roll call please.
Excuse me, Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizel?
Yes.
Muchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-eight oh one becomes ordinance seven thousand forty-five. And Council Bill sixty-eight oh two.
Mayor and council, this is a, uh, a grant amendment, grant amendment for the DNR grant for stormwater projects on West Bland and Montrose, as you remember, with, the initial acceptance was only to cover the, the, the engineering on these projects. And this, this amendment will utilize or bring us up to the full grant award for us to move forward on those projects. I plan on bringing the materials and a contract to you in our next council meeting. Any questions?
There are no questions, first reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving two grant award amendments with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources through the Missouri ARPA Water Infrastructure Grant Program.
Motion to approve.
Second. Jordan and Wall? Roll call please.
Atkins?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizel?
Yes.
Muchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Second reading please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving two grant award amendments with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources through the Missouri ARPA Water Infrastructure Grant Program.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Mizel and Garner? On the second, roll call please.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizel?
Yes.
Muchler?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill eight sixty-eight oh two becomes ordinance seven thousand forty-six.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard, appreciate it. No first readings tonight, uh, any comments from staff in the audience?
I would like to invite each one of you to our annual employee appreciation luncheon. It is Wednesday at the Civic Center and we eat at eleven.
Eleven AM Wednesday. Excellent. Think I saw Sean's hand come up there too, so, thank you, Kathy.
I want to provide the council with an update on the city's financial audit for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. My understanding is that normally this time of year, the auditors would come down to present the audit for council approval. The financial audit this year is being conducted by KPM CPAs and advisors out of Springfield. Uh, this is their first year performing the city's audit. And they requested additional time. It had to do with, uh, converting the city's modified cash basis accounting to a full accrual basis. So, really, I want to emphasize they have not raised any, any issues regarding the city's finances, no concerns. Uh, I've been in touch with them, uh, we will be in compliance with state regulations on submitting the, the draft audit to the state. Uh, it's a situation of them coming down to present to council beginning in January. And I think it has to do with mostly their, this is their first year doing the city's audit. And becoming more familiar with, with the city's books, so, a- again, just want to emphasize there's no concerns being raised. Just to, wanted to update the council on that status.
Great.
Okay, bye.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir. Chief, you have anything?
Yes, Mayor and council, uh, pleased to inform you that on November the thirteenth, we went live with our consolidated dispatch. Everybody seems to have adapted quickly and well and the relationship continues to get better as we move along.
Great. Chief? Richard? Uh, Lena?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you tonight for the acknowledgement and the Silverleaf Award. It's been a pleasure working for the city and, um, it's not something that I aspired to do, it just kind of worked out that way, you know? Um, I made a great move from working from my previous job to coming to the city. Um, it's been rewarding and I've got a chance to work with a lot of great people, so I just appreciate it, thank you so much.
You bet, our honor. Counselor? Mike?
Mayor and council, with Lena's departure, I've decided that I can't go on. Um, I just have to position with the city of Saint Joseph. Uh, the mayor and I have already started discussing transition. I want to be clear, uh, that mayor and, and this council have been fantastic. And we have, you guys have led and pulled together a team, uh, we've got incredible things done. I also want to add that this team is much bigger than, stronger than one person. So this, this team will go forward under your leadership and guidance. Uh, and they'll continue to do great things. So, there'll be further conversations, I'm quite sure, but I wanted to get it on the record. I truly appreciate working with you guys. Where we have come from and where really the community has come from and where we're at now is significantly different. That wouldn't have happened without one team rolling together, so, thank you and details follow as the mayor and I work them out. And if Lena would've stayed, I, I probably would've.
All her fault.
Is your decision final?
Yes.
Can't be swayed.
Yes.
Trust me, I've tried. Um, Atkins? Start down here, I think it started over here last time.
Nothing. Mayor, uh, I wanted to just tell Mike what a good job he's done. Uh, really opened up a lot of doors that we weren't in and brought together a great city collaboration uh, from Chamber to, which was non-existent in my opinion, to a lot of different things, so. Mike, thank you, appreciate that very much, you've done a great job.
It's one team, one team works.
Evans? Mitchell?
No, we're here, thank you.
Mizel?
We're gonna need a sample of skin cells to start the cloning process, that'll be the only thing. Well, I, I just, I hate that news, I, I imagine everybody here knew that except me, because I just keep my head in the lava, but that's just bad news, um, sorry, uh, to be that vocal about it, but, uh, it, you've been transformative for the city and I, I just hope we're able to find someone who's, uh, let's say ninety percent is qualified. Because I don't think we're gonna find someone who's a hundred percent is qualified.
I appreciate your kind words and, you know, once again, we have built a team that's much better than one person. And while I'm harassing Lena because I live to do that, um, the organization will move forward. We're bigger than any one person. The, the staff that we have here, um, the team is incredible and they will keep it moving forward under your leadership and that.
I just don't want to go backwards.
I don't think the mayor will certainly just let that happen alone with you guys, because he's already on a path.
Good. Very good.
Muchler? Wall?
Nothing, Mayor.
Jordan?
I got two things, uh, Sam, there was a fire hydrant out on New Buffalo Road's been hit by a car. The one just, oh, is it, okay, okay.
The fair enough apparently.
Um, it, it.
Don't you drive out there every day?
Yeah, every, every day.
You hit it?
Yeah, no, it's, the other way. It, it's only, it moved about six inches, it's not leaking. But it, it may bind up, anyway, anyway. And I echo what Councilman Mizel said and I was here when it wasn't. And I've experienced the process of getting here and thank you for bringing us from where we were to where we are.
Thank you, sir.
When's the, uh, the official date yet or?
Uh, mayor and I worked through this, council.
Good enough. It's all happy.
Gunnar?
Just wanted, uh, this Saturday we had the shop with the cops and you guys did super.
Just wanted, uh, this Saturday, we had the shop with the cops and you guys did super. We had two hundred and sixteen kids that, uh, shopped and the tears, the laughter, it was really cool. And had a lot of interact kids help. Um, it was just an outstanding day. They s- they spent over thirty-two thousand dollars to come from where it started with a thousand-dollar grant from Walmart to where it's at now. It's just unbelievable. And Casey Springer, uh, leads that and she does a great job. And, uh, I just wanted to recognize her and, and all the, everybody that showed up. I don't know how many officers there were, but, uh, it would've been a good day to be a, a criminal in Lebanon that day because but, uh, it was a lot of fun. And those kids just thoroughly, thoroughly enjoy it, so, and kudos to Walmart for, for helping with that. And Rebecca, the ATV parade was outstanding again. I know it's a lot of work, but you do a great job with that. I understand. It seemed to me the crowd was up. Uh, of course, it was a beautiful night and that helps, but, uh, it just continues to grow and you do a great job spearheading it, so, thank you. Uh, I think that's all we got.
That's all I have?
Okay.
Uh, a couple of housekeeping things. Uh, next meeting will be January thirteenth and January twenty-seventh. That's our January calendar. Both will be, uh, full work session council meetings. Both are Mondays. So the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh will be that. And, uh, Lena, I want to thank you again for your, um, service to the community. It's, uh, been awesome and it's great to work with you. I know you've kept me straight several times, which is great. Uh, I need that a little bit every once in a while and, uh.
Just know that's nothing personal, it's part of the job.
I, I never took it personal, so. But, uh, always, always a treat to see you and, and thank you for all that you've done for the, for Lebanon and the community as well and uh, certainly, uh, wish you well in, uh, your retirement, so, congratulations for making it this far, so. And, uh, uh, Mike, I'll, I'll comment just a second on yours. Uh, it is sad to see you go, but, uh, like you said, we aren't, uh, we're bigger than one person and, um, looking and, and working hard on, uh, a plan moving forward and, and, uh, I think we'll, um, we'll grow, we'll grow from this. We'll, we'll be fine, we'll be just fine, promise you. Um, I do want to, as this is our last meeting and as I've done since I've been mayor, I make a little end-of-the-year statement, so I'll provide this to you, Lena, afterwards, so you don't have to, to, uh, but, uh, Lebanon has continued to grow this past year with an estimated population over fifteen thousand five hundred, which is a three and a half percent increase since twenty-twenty census. This growth is attributed to the community's vision. With their input, this council has crafted goals to help foster this growth. And the June council approved Lebanon's comprehensive plan, Project Twenty Forty. After over a year of collaboration, Lebanon's vision for the future is outlined in this document, shaping our community based on our values and provides a roadmap for this council and future councils to continue to work towards an even more prosperous community. Also, earlier this year, we conducted our biennial, uh, customer survey and business survey. And as you know, the surveys are the backbone of our, creating our goals and plans for near term. And nearly every ordinance that we pass tonight comes straight directly from those goals, which is, which is awesome to me. Uh, the studies show where our focus should be and while our scores have improved since the first one back in twenty-eighteen, um, what hasn't is the actual items to focus on.